Join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fellas, we could have roll call, please.
Matt Warner.
Here.
Craig Croshaw.
Here.
Matt Warner.
Here.
Tyler Fulenkamp.
Here.
Wiley, sir.
Here.
You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our April 19 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? So moved. I have a motion from Mass.
Second.
Second from Greg. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion's carried. First thing on our agenda tonight are a couple of event forms that Melissa's had turned in. Do you have those, Melissa?
I have one.
You have one? Which one do you have?
The American Legion Adams Wells Crisis Shelter Poker Run and Tony's.
Okay, I see Tony's here. And then I think the Armed Forces Day Benefit, the Wet Spot. Yeah, and you have your form also, yeah, okay. Well, let's take one at a time. The first one here is the American Legion Adams Wells Crisis Center is going to have a poker run. It would be June 11th, which is Sunday? Is that right? Where's Tony? Saturday. That is the same basic weekend that the Sculpture Tour unveils on Friday night that night. So downtown will be a buzz that Friday, the 10th, and then on the 11th. This would be set up time at 7:00 a.m. The event starts at 8:00 a.m. And would end 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. They're expecting 300-plus people. And they're asking that the street be closed, Madison Street, between First and Second Streets. And Tony has already talked to Greg and Les and Jeremy and got their signatures on the form. So they are all okay with it? Go ahead, Tony.
We would also ask that we can possibly have part of First Street parking lot for overflow, if at all possible.
Oh, you mean for the event itself or for motorcycles?
Because there's going to be two to 300 bikes. They won't all fit in our parking lot and probably won't all fit on Madison in the parking lot, so.
Well, I would have to think that that's not going to be a problem. There's plenty of space in the First Street lot, so. Are you expecting many cars in addition to the bikes?
Not really, other than volunteers and employees.
Yeah, then we should have ample room over there for that. So does anyone have any questions for Tony while he's here? If not, do I have a motion to approve their move? Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Motion's carried. You're good to go, Tony. Thank you. And we're going to keep this and next. This one is the Armed Forces Day Benefit Outdoor Event with banned bands, food, beer tent, cornhole tournament. It's sponsored by the Wet Spot. Anything really different than the last previous years?
No, it's pretty much the same as the previous years, yeah.
It's been a good event, seems to keep growing?
Yeah, it does. Every year we keep doing it in the bottom of our home every year.
This event would be Saturday, May 21st. Begins at 2:00 p.m. Their setup time would begin at 10:00 a.m. Goes from 2:00 until 10:00 p.m. Did the other merchants along there, were they all contacted and are they all good with it?
Yeah, yeah.
Everyone, all the way down to and including Niblicks?
Yeah.
And the new business, the boutique place?
Yeah.
Beauty shop, they're all, they're all good? Okay. And on the second.
I haven't been able to catch up with the.
They're all here.
Are they?
Yeah. Greg and Les and Jeremy, we've done this, how many years now? Two or three, five years?
The fifth year.
This is the fifth year. Do you guys ever have any issues with it, any questions?
Not at all.
Okay, would you want to sign this while she's here tonight? She can just come back and have you sign it. Counsel, have any questions? Do I have a motion? So moved. I have a motion?
Second.
And I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same? Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good event, both of you.
Thank you.
Okay. Adam?
Hey, I'm here for.
Come on up here now, come on. Get the microphone going.
I'm here to ask for permission and your financial support again for the Decatur Fireworks Display 24th Annual Fireworks, to be held on the 4th of July at Riverside Center. So far, again, we've already picked up our sponsors, the VFW Post 236, the regular members, the men's auxiliary, the women's auxiliary, along with Bud Free Test Control has made responses already. The money there is mutual, as you know. We would also ask that you be the welcome, give the welcome speech on that day.
Will you be here to the Reds' deal? Reds' deal? On the 4th of July, the Cubs, Reds? No, I'm not going. Road trip? I'm not going.
As in the past, we're going to honor Rob Metz, and we're still looking for somebody yet as a major person to honor that.
Okay, sure.
We haven't had any problems. The only problem that we have always had to address was dogs.
Dogs, I knew you were going to say that. Well, I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Bob can help promote the lack of dogs thereof.
Big letters.
Thanks, Les. Do you know what the city's donated in the past? Off top of your head?
Not off the top of my head right now.
Do you have any idea?
It's like a 350 thing, but we can just make.
How about we make, how about I look for a motion from counsel here to continue with whatever, whatever we did last year? So now you're, you will submit an event form?
Tell us about the event form and everything else once we get closer to it.
Right, yeah.
Right now, what we need to do is get started on getting our program started.
Yeah.
I'm going to give you guys a month to notice what's going on.
Well, we've approved this 24 years in a row, or 23 years in a row, so I'd have to think that unless someone has some opposition to it, that we're going to be good to go. I thank you very much for.
Thank you for everything that the city and the department does to help us out.
Yep, you do a great job with it, Adam, so.
Thank you.
I have a motion to, for this to be approved. Do I have a second? For the fireworks?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next thing on my agenda is the bid results of the Interceptor Replacement and Relief Sewer Project on First Street. Who should I have report on that? You'll be doing it or somewhere here we have. We opened the bids for the, we opened the bids for the First Street Sewer Project back on April 26th. The engineer, Clark Dietz, that designed the system for us, they took the bids under advisement. There were two firms that bid, Fleming Excavating from here in Decatur and Geiger Excavating from Fort Wayne. Fleming was the winner of the bid, and tonight at the Board of Works meeting, we voted to accept their offer. They came in about $900,000 under the engineer's estimate for the cost of this project. Fleming's bid was $2,716,459.90. And they were the low bid, and as I said, we accepted their bid. And likely, construction will start sometime in early half of June, we're anticipating, and probably run well into the fall before completed. Anything I should address? Okay. Ann or Jeremy, did either of you have any comments on the bids and Fleming?
It was very, very nice to try to see the little bit.
Yeah, yeah. Sure, absolutely.
I actually listened to Craig a little bit yesterday morning, and he's very pleased to get to work, very much wanting to get out.
Yep, it's a good project for him, so. Jeremy, while you're ready to speak, why don't you just come on and give us a little progress report on First Street Sewer and the demolition and prep work for the sewer?
Yesterday, we started demolition on three properties along the First Street area. First property was the Rice Realty Building, or former Rice Realty Building. That building has been demolished and hauled away. Down to some concrete removal at this point. The actual tear out has been completed, there's just a pile of concrete there that still needs to be hauled away. The plan for tomorrow is to demolish the Ortiz home, former Ortiz home, the two-story, and also at the same time be hauling the concrete away from, from the.
Rice.
Former Rice building. So I'm hopeful that by late Thursday afternoon, we should have the Ortiz property cleaned up and be moving on to probably the Marx Building. There is quite a bit of dirt work to do, backfilling and some grading work and stuff that will have to be completed. But we did rent a piece of equipment to help with the, the work that we're doing over there. It's worked out very well so far. The plan is to have that equipment returned this Friday, which would be actually under my estimate, my, my time estimate that I had estimated for the work. Next week, we'll, we will just be doing a lot of grading, a lot of hauling dirt and stuff on one of those properties, getting everything up to grade or as close to it as we can. Very proud of the guys for the work that they've done the last few days. They've really stepped up and did a wonderful job over there, keeping everything safe. They're just doing a real nice job for you guys.
We're blessed with some good workers, that's for sure. Yep, we are.
At the end of the Ortiz property, we'll just be down to the pole barn behind Marx and some asphalt removal. Hopefully, with the timing, we can get the, the pole barn demolished, hauled away and asphalt taken out before we send our rental piece of equipment back.
And I, I'm going to ask you a naive question on my part. Like, when you tore down the former Rice Realty, a lot of, lot of block, a lot of concrete. When you bring down the home, while it's larger, bigger square footage, whatever, there's more wood, less concrete, is it easier or harder to?
The home, the home will actually be easier.
Even though it's bigger?
Yeah, we've had a tremendous amount of time separating the material, because obviously we don't want to pay to tank the whole block of concrete and stuff to J County. The home will actually, it will be a larger pile of rubble, but it will be a lot quicker to haul away. To the point that you won't get to concrete or anything until you get to the basement, though. Once you bring the house down, you know, you can crawl up on top of the pile, just break everything up, set right on top of the pile and load the trucks all at the same time, so. The house won't be near as long to deal with as what we've, what we have in Rice property. So, so far, we're about almost 17 hours into that job, so, you know, it's went very well. I estimated 40 hours rental on the machine, we're going to be well under that.
Good deal.
And our guys have been capable of running the.
Correct, yep, yep. We have a very skilled workforce.
Yep.
Something you guys really need to be proud of.
All right, thanks.
Yep.
Stay right there.
Okay.
Okay, the next item is the big item on the agenda for this evening. And that is, the Indiana Department of Transportation has, from time to time, and I'm a rookie at this, being the new mayor and all, but they will come out with a call for projects. And Jeremy, correct me if I'm wrong, but the last time they actually had a call like this was over two years ago?
Two, almost three years.
Two, almost three years ago. And this would be for projects over and above the U.S. highways and the state roads. This would be projects that municipalities would want to take on in a cost-share type venture where the, where NDOT would pay 80% and the city would pay 20%. And a while back, Jeremy and Tim and Melissa thought it was, would be beneficial for me to meet the people in the Fort Wayne branch of NDOT, so we went up there and had a nice meeting with them. Actually, we scheduled the meeting a couple of weeks ahead of time, and about three days before our meeting, NDOT came out with this call for projects. So the timing of our meeting was, was, I thought, perfect. So we had a very good meeting, I was able to get to know the people at NDOT. There was, I think, maybe about eight people from NDOT, six or eight people from NDOT in our meeting. And when we started to wrap up the meeting, at the end of the meeting, we just kind of threw it out to them and said, hey, you've just put out the call for projects. You know, we want to, we want to, we have several things we could put in for, you know, among them were, you know, like our, the pedestrian bridge over the river over here, possibly some kind of a revamping of the highway so that would be more friendly getting in and out of Hanupman Park. Another thing we talked about was the remodeling or, what's the word I want to use, modifying the Five Points intersection. And we just point blank asked them, we said, is there one of these projects that, in the eyes of NDOT, is more of a valid no-brainer type project? And to a T, every one of them around the table said, you need to put in for the Five Points intersection. And we discussed it with them a little bit, and, and since then, we've talked here, back at City Hall, Jeremy and I, Melissa, Tim, the other department heads, and coming before counsel tonight to have a discussion about this call for projects and what, you know, what your opinion is on the Five Points intersection and whether we would like to pursue this project. Cam, go ahead.
You have members of the Five Points Committee back here as well?
That's true. Raise your hands, folks. It's Andy, Andy Gay, Mark Jesse, Max Meller, who've been a part of this committee from back during our two, our two years of applications for the Stellar Grant. And a modification of that intersection was part of our Stellar Grant application, so this isn't something new. And NDOT has seen that on our Stellar app, and that's, that's where, you know, we had NDOT support on our Stellar project both years. I mean, they, they were highly unfavorable of, they said, any intersection that has five points coming together like that is a, is a real, real problem for any community. So, you know, we've gathered some data as to, I think we've given all of you one of your spaces that you're.
Let them, I mean, because they've been working on this really for two years, and meeting and discussing. And I think in many aspects, we're trying to chomping at the opportunity for the call for projects.
Okay.
So I don't know if.
Is one, are one of you prepared to speak this evening on behalf of the Five Points Committee? Look at them, they're chomping at the biz.
I think they want to, I think they want to.
All the, all the data that was compiled by the Five Points Committee, they've done a wonderful job at gathering this information. They've also done a wonderful job at establishing relationships with the property owners in the Five Points area throughout the past two years. So this committee knows the project, they know the area, and they are ready to come forward with the recommendations to counsel tonight.
Now, let me just mention, the committee, the committee members, as I said, this goes back the last two years to our experience with the Stellar Grant, or it's not a grant, Stellar Project. It was Clint Tumbelson, Tony Murray, Max Meller, Andy Gay, Mike Webb, Deb Michler, and Josh Franz.
And Mark.
And Mark.
And Mark, Jesse, yeah, he's not listed here. Sorry, sorry, Mark. Going through that intersection, here's some information obtained from the city and county emergency officials. Emergency one calls that went through that intersection, there were 833 in 2015. E2 emergency calls, there were 904. E3 emergency calls, there were 815, so there were 2,552 calls, and then multiply that times two because they have to have the return trip to get back to the hospital, so 5,104 trips through the Five Points intersection by emergency personnel. In the year 2015, there were four accidents reported for the Five Points intersection by the Decatur Police. None had injuries involved, and, but there were probably estimated hundreds of near-misses, which we may all have participated in one of those near-misses over the years. Fire runs, and this is paraphrased from Les, they had 60 to 70 calls, 23 responses to Memorial, to the Adams Memorial Hospital. Anytime the helicopter comes into town for an emergency, the fire department goes out there for a standby. They had six calls, the fire department had six calls to Woodcrest, six calls to Boys and Girls Club. All told, they had 40 calls that would route emergency traffic through Five Points intersection related to their responses. Other, other calls that they would go through therefore would be calls to Pleasant Mills, Arcadia Village, East Washington Township, St. Mary's Township, et cetera. Mercer Avenue routed, direct route to the southeast portion of the township coverage area. Go ahead.
I think the group tonight wants to speak to, you know, why is this project important? And why is, why is this area of town important? So you guys want to? Go ahead.
I was in charge of gathering the information from the bus, North Adams Bus Garage. Vicki, I got that, I just wanted to report that you got there, the number of buses that go through, the stops that are in the area, and how many routes go through there, the buses and the rugs. And pretty straightforward, but what was more telling was what she said when I was leaving her office, she said that she trained the bus drivers, Vicki, and she said that when she trains the new bus drivers, she trains them to avoid the Five Points and take an alternate route through some other way through the city when they come back through. You know, going one way, as we all know, going one way out of town is not bad, but coming back through is off Adams Street or Winchester or any of them into that intersection is, and I can't imagine a bus trying to make that left-hand turn. To me, it's stressful, I'm not in a car, but. The main thing that we started out with were, were safety issues. To make a gateway to the city in that, in that side of town would be nice. And accessibility. I mean, right now, I know that daily I go through that intersection one way to work, but never on the way back home. My white boy, you know, thinks I'm silly that I don't go up to that intersection. I won't, I'll take one of the other streets and cut across, cancel whatever comes through at some time. I, it's not my favorite intersection, so it's kind of a personal thing of nature. That's all I have.
I might just add too that NDOT really likes to fund projects where safety is a concern, and this is one of the most dangerous intersections, I think it is the most dangerous intersection in the county. So NDOT, I'm not surprised they really like this project. Throughout the Stellar applications and also through part of the Five Points Committee, we've, as a group, looked at the intersection and included the costs that were previously prepared for the Stellar application, included all the hard costs and soft costs for the project. So we had included landscape architecture, ornament lighting, a feature in the middle of the intersection. We also talked about sidewalks and urban gutter and the like, as well as pavement markings, and also drainage as well. So all those hard costs were included, not the soft costs, including the NDOT requirements for all the design and surveying and right-of-way acquisition and right-of-way engineering if needed. Those are all included, as well as geotechnical costs as well. So I think the cost that will be included in the application should be sufficient for the, for the entire project.
One of the things that I'd add that was interesting in talking with NDOT is the fact that this intersection has been the subject of study for many, many years. I mean, I think there was a staff member that actually had worked with an engineering firm 20-some years ago and commented that this had been targeted as an intersection that was in need of being revamped in, in whatever way. And, you know, in the Stellar projects, the, the initial proposal was aroundabout, doesn't necessarily mean that that's the end result. There, there are other options that would certainly need to be looked at, but, you know, NDOT was very much aware of the fact that this is an intersection that's been in need of something being done for many, many years. And I think NERC didn't, didn't play to a study.
NERC did, yeah, I think everybody was involved in that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was looking at this this week, I'll just share with you, I don't know if we have a copy of it here. There is, this speaks to the property owners around it, and if you talk to the funeral home, they have big issues of people avoiding it by going through their, their parking lot.
Funeral home, funeral home parking lot.
Yeah, funeral home parking lot. On the, the overlay picture in that study, the NERC study of the parking lot, you can see worn traffic going from Adams coming all the way through the parking lot. I mean, it's clear as day when you're looking at it. And if you've ever spent, I've been there talking to the owners and cars come flying through there. So it's definitely a big issue, and I think through your conversations with those around there, of course, Mike Webb lives there, right? You're committee members. I mean, receptivity? Open to, I mean, what, how is?
I wasn't involved in any of it.
Oh. Probably Clint, the guy that's not here?
Yeah, Clint Tumbelson was not able to make it, his wife had a baby. Clint Tumbelson, Laurie Ish, and I met down at the gas station last week to talk to Mr. Gill. And while we were sitting there, a car pulled through the funeral home to take the shortcut route around there. So, I mean, it happens all, all the time. I believe even the, one of the funeral directors was out in the parking lot doing some cleaning one day, and a car pulled in and like honked at him to get out of his way while he was trying to pass through, so.
I did talk to the funeral, not funeral home, the church there, and they mentioned. But he said that, you know, they were a little bit concerned that stepping out, you know, that is moving closer to their building, but he said they didn't feel the decline, and it's not that much of a.
Right, Mr. Gill?
No, the.
The church, okay, yes, yes.
So what's the process? I mean, if we're going to do a call for projects, how does that work?
If you guys choose tonight to move forward, what we would do is we would apply for an intersection improvement project. What that will do is that will, if it's approved, that will allow funding to be channeled down for preliminary engineering, traffic studies, so on and so forth, to determine what the best option is for that intersection. Now, it could come back with a couple of different options. Just to warn you, NDOT is going to pick the safest option and want the best option maybe, whether it's a realignment, whether it's a total different setup, whatever.
They recall.
That is going to be in dot, between in dot and the engineering firm that at some point we would hire. It would be a private firm that would be doing all engineering and all the, all the legwork for that. Working with, and what we would do is we would apply for, fill out the application, get the letters of support for a project from local community leaders, residents, so on and so forth, specifically primarily in the area itself. Attach to the application, attach the estimates and such for this. There's several different. There's several different pages that go along with the application process. We would complete that, we would send it off to NDOT on or before 5:00 PM on May the sixteenth. Preferably, the quicker we could get this in, get it completed completely thoroughly, get it sent in, NDOT will take a quick review to make sure that everything is on the application, that, that the application would be satisfactory to them. If not, they would review it, send it back and say, you know, you have corrections to be made.
So, in other words, it's to our benefit to send it in early so they can review it?
Correct, we would make those connections, email it back to them, you know, as long as they don't have any, any ill feelings towards the application, and we could get back and forth and back and forth by the sixteenth, we would meet the deadline. At that point, sometime between May the sixteenth and October, if we were, were shortlisted, if you will, you would be invited to NDOT, and you would plead your case. You, you would market your project, why your project is better than the guy sitting right beside of you. You get your facts in line, you have, you have a short little video, you know, your presentation is just minutes long. They take it under advisement, you would know by early October if you're gonna be a recipient of funds for the roughly 2020, 2021 construction. You know, so you're gonna have four to five years depending on when they give you the final okay. And as long as the federal funds are available to do all your studies, do all your engineering, figure out what you wanna do, you know, if it's just a realignment, if it's a total modification, and so on and so forth, all the way up to property acquisition, all the way up to environmental, getting everything lined up to get to construction. But just please keep in mind, construction wouldn't be till the 2021 construction season if you're awarded the money. So, if you choose to move forward tonight, you're in the, today to October, kind of on the fence, if you will, 'cause you won't know for sure. You know, you may have a good idea after you go through the interview process and the presentation process, you know, you would have a better idea at that point.
It's an eighty-twenty?
It's an eighty-twenty grant, you would have to set aside or earmark twenty percent of the total estimate.
Which is something that we would want to plan and budget for over the next four years, basically.
Correct, correct.
So that when, and some of it actually would, if we're accepted, some of it would actually be paid out next year.
Yes.
Some in eighteen, some in nineteen, then a big chunk in.
You, it would be paid out as the faces of the project or as the faces of the engineering go. You know, your preliminary engineering, your land acquisition, your right-of-way, so on and so forth. So, once we would look at the estimates and do the math, you know, we could give you a better, a better idea or better estimate on what we feel it would be annually. But unless something would really go bad on the project, you're only gonna pay the twenty percent of what your estimate is. Now, if for some reason you go way over that, you go way over your grant application, then you're gonna pay a hundred percent of the overages.
So, on our grant application, we wanna err on the high side?
Correct. Err on the high side within reason, because you don't wanna kick yourself out just because you have too high of an estimate. And NDOT may come back in and say, you know, after we've done the preliminary engineering and all the, all the crash surveys and, and such, they could possibly come back and, and actually work with you to reduce your estimate a little bit, you know, if they say you're either real high or real low, you know. So, they're, they're very eager to work with us on doing something down there.
I don't mean to totally change the subject, but I think this would be a good time, maybe if I could have Phyllis explain, we just gotta, we're, we're in the process of getting a distribution from the state. And if you could explain maybe why we're getting the distribution and what is to go for, Phyllis?
Per Senate Bill sixty-seven, the city will be receiving a one-time special distribution from local income taxes. Before June first, the county auditor will distribute these funds to each taxing unit. The city will be receiving a total of five hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. Seventy-five percent of the distribution is restricted and can only be used for local road construction, maintenance, or repairs. The stakeboard of accounts has designated that the restricted funds be deposited into the new fund titled Loewitz Special Distribution, and the remaining unrestricted twenty-five percent may be deposited in the city's rainy day fund or the general fund. If we wanna spend the money this year, the city will need to go through an additional proper, additional appropriation process, which I think Jeremy says we could easily spend that money this year, so.
However.
Good news.
Yeah, it's great.
It is, it's excellent news.
Because we could use it.
Basically, what your seventy-five percent of this figures up to being a little, little over three hundred and ninety-eight thousand that we could put back into our local streets for paving, preventive maintenance, additional crack sealing, so on and so forth.
That could be done this season?
That could be done. The legislators are urging the local cities and towns to get this money spent as quickly as possible.
Okay.
One benefit of using it this year is asphalt's down about seven percent over the last few years. If you take the money that is appropriated for this year for paving, and if you would throw that three hundred and ninety-eight thousand on top of that, you're roughly paving a, roughly a block and a half additional than what you would have been last year due to the fuel prices being down. So, there, there is some benefit.
Do, do we wanna think about a small, a small percentage in rainy day or not go there at all? Okay, you're, we're jumping back to the NDOT?
No, he's talking about the other twenty-five percent.
The other twenty-five percent. Uh, 'cause I heard you say that there could be a percentage of that put into rainy day, twenty-five percent.
Yeah, it actually, seventy-five that goes for, that's restricted is three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, and the remaining is a hundred and thirty-two thousand.
The one thirty-two would actually go into rainy day.
That's already.
Per, per the bill, per, per the Senate bill that passed. So, the three hundred and ninety-eight is the seventy-five percent.
So, they already designated that that will be, okay, okay.
Correct, yeah.
Let me ask this question, jumping back to where we were. Do we have any other projects that are ready to go before NDOT at the moment? I mean, is this?
I mean, the one that we had out there before with the modifications to the bridge, I mean, that really, NDOT was not.
We've been told that that's not, I guess.
They don't, they're, probably wouldn't be a.
And they won't, am I correct, that I, just the pedestrian bridge itself, they wouldn't fund with this, with this call?
So, at this call, we really don't have one option to put in a call that we're prepared to do right now? I mean, because you're not gonna get anything ready before May fourteenth or twenty?
Sixteenth. Sixteenth. And, and I do wanna kind of explain how that eligibility is. It's not every street in the city of Decatur that's eligible for the federal funds. You have a set amount of streets within your city that is designated as system streets. It's more of your Second Street, Mercer Avenue, so on and so forth. Your higher lease, or high-travel streets are the only ones that are actually eligible, eligible for federal funds. So, you can't take like a, a neighborhood, just a little side street that would be eligible, that, that would need work. So, with this additional funding that's coming available, which is available through Loewitz, that's where you address some of those other areas that need either repavement or, you know, some handicap ramps upgraded, so on and so forth. Try to work ahead as much as what you can, be more proactive, you know, and try to get to the point that you could possibly budget for some of these bigger projects, you know, over the next few years.
So, what you're saying is that the money that we're receiving upfront needs to be used elsewhere now?
Correct.
And we budget for it?
Well, if we, if we use this money now.
This year, we have to ask for additional preparation. We, we can't just spend it, we have to go through that process.
But that's more of a formality. That's what they're encouraging us to do, though, right?
Right, that's what Jeremy would like to do.
Yeah. And if we do that, if we can get ahead while asphalt prices are down and whatever, and do more paving this year, a lot more paving this year, then what was going to be appropriated for next year, we could use that money as seed money to go toward into the NDOT funding?
Yeah, once, once we really sit down and put the pencil to all the estimates and figure out exactly what would, what would be spent, you know, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one.
Realistically, I think, we had kinda talked about this, that this project would be upwards of, what, two and three-quarter to three million dollars?
Roughly is. That, that's a little bit of a, an accelerated number.
Right.
Just to make sure that we're, we're on top of it, stay away.
So, our, our share of that could be five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
And, uh.
Over a four-year.
Over a period of four years, we need to, to raise that money or budget that money. So, tonight, do we need to pass a motion to, for, for additional appropriations then? Is that what you're asking for?
No, tonight would be to authorize submission of a application in response to the call for projects, and specifically the Five Point intersection, I think is what Jeremy and.
Are you recommending that we?
Well, we've got two.
Put the application.
Well, there is.
I just wanted to, I'm made aware, before we go back to the NDOT application, that we have this money coming through.
Okay, well, I was referring to the five hundred and thirty.
Okay.
Intersection for that thing. It can't, it can't.
Twenty-one.
It's been set up that way.
So, yeah, we, I would be looking for a motion to, to approve, Jeremy applying for this, but I wanna also understood that come budget time, we're gonna have to work funding over the next four years or so into this, should we get accepted. Basically, we're applying for a feasibility study through the state, which we're shortlisted for.
You're actually applying for a project.
Okay.
So, if you are awarded the project, you are tied to doing something there.
Yep. We don't know what, but we.
Some kind of intersection improvement, some type of project that's identified as the safest, best option for that intersection.
And this committee has come to us reporting and recommending that some modification changes need to be made to Five Points from their study, that is their recommendation. Is that correct?
Correct. And, and going back further, when they reconstructed Second Street and Mercer Avenue, when they took all the trucks and stuff out of the downtown, that intersection was looked at at that point during the engineering. The individual actually works for NDOT, and he had, and he had actually worked on that project, the Second Street and Mercer Avenue. And he had told me a few different times that they had discussed way back then of doing some kind of a modification, some kind of a realignment with that intersection. They had a couple different proposals. He did not remember what configuration it was for sure, how they were, you know, skewing that intersection. So, this is not the first time that, that this has been discussed of identifying safety issues, safety concerns, trying to make that intersection better for pedestrian and the locomotives.
Mm-hmm.
So, it just, at that point, there was not a lot of support with changing that They just really didn't know what they wanted to do way back in the early nineties when that went to construction.
This all came up, let me take you back two years to stellar and why it was even brought into discussion, was because the focus, the only reason, let me back, the only reason it wasn't included in this last year's submission was because the budget was cut in half. So, we had to drop out a project, so we didn't, we didn't include that one. But the reason it was brought to the very beginning was talking about all the principles that were trying to apply to the downtown plan of connecting pedestrians from Seventh Street, looping our trail network, which is why the sidewalks have already been done on Seventh Street. We talked about redoing Adams Street pedestrian-friendly to bring traffic back downtown, the, or the greenway, that they've extended all the way up just shy to that intersection so that we can loop our greenway from Legion Park back to First Street eventually in the, in the future park development there. So, there's a lot of things happening at that intersection. It was like, okay, if we're gonna make this work and we're gonna have a, a aesthetic to our downtown, we've gotta address this from a safety perspective, which is why we included to begin with. We dropped it simply because the budget didn't allow for it last year. But, but if, so if we're pursuing this thing and we put the application in, then we're essentially committing your budget upwards of six hundred thousand dollars over four years.
And I'll just throw out one scenario here.
Cool.
If everyone in this room was asked the question, if you were driving down Second Street going south, and you came to the Five Points intersection, and you wanted to angle off to the right on Winchester Street, would you turn on your turn signal that you're making a right-hand turn, or would you not turn on your turn signal? Would probably, half of them would and half of them wouldn't.
Half would.
And if, and if we're torn on what to do, what do out-of-towners think? What a first-time young gribers think when they go through that intersection? So, I mean, it's a, it's a nasty intersection.
Correct.
Craig.
I can tell you what the answer is.
She said, no.
What, what do you take a book in your hand?
Mercer Avenue is a continuation of Second Street, so anytime you're off, going off of the thoroughfare, you're supposed to turn on your, your turn signal. So, it doesn't matter how much of a, a gradual, as long as you're coming off of the thoroughfare.
I wouldn't do it till I reached Adams Street.
I was gonna say.
Right, right, the safety issue.
Yeah, you turn on your turn signal ahead of time, and someone.
Right down in front of you.
Yeah.
Well. I'll make a motion that we progress with what Jeremy suggested and along with the committee.
I'll second that motion. I have a motion from Craig, a second from Lyley, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose the same. Good luck.
You gotta work out the best we can between now and then. We will have to, we're, we're talking back and forth, we may have to make some adjustments if we go on court.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, committee, for your work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for your time, guys.
It's dangerous.
Okay, um, that's all that's on the agenda. Uh, excuse, oh, yeah, Phyllis, you have a few things.
Um, Pete DeHa is petitioning the council to vacate the alley. Is Roger here? Roger, you want, do you want to name where the actual location is?
Okay, okay. There's an alley easement that runs east and west to Pete DeHa's current location, and they're petitioning to vacate that easement. They're proposing, I believe, a new building on the North Adams Lot, and that is gonna be in the footprint of the building. Wastewater Department Berlin, and they went out and checked it out. There is no storm drain, or at least not visible to the catch bases and the structures that are there now. It did show one at one time going east and west, they're back to that easement that runs north and south behind the building. But when the highway got done, it all got diverted, and now it heads south on Thirteenth Street until it hits two twenty-four and goes to the ditch and that route instead of going back through that barge. As far as I know, there is no other utilities under there. We've talked to their representative, and we're still trying to maintain just a utility easement through there, just for future use if it ever need be.
So, they wanna maintain a utility easement, but vacate the area that's designated as alley?
Vacate the alley right of way, correct. Vacate the alley right away, correct.
And earlier, you were all given a copy of the map and the layout, so you've had some time to review that. Is there any discussion? If not...
So we'll just need to make the petition a matter of record?
Yes, make it a matter of record and hold a public hearing.
And also, Ann has written a letter stating that there is no storm lines there either.
Okay, so make it a matter of record and open, have a...
Authorize a public hearing to be held at the next meeting.
I'll second that. A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Okay, Phyllis, I think you had a couple other things, didn't you?
Yeah, council previously approved thirteen percent of our ceded distribution to go the Adams County Economic Development, and I have the annual agreement that the mayor has signed. We just need to make that a matter of record, too.
So move.
I have a motion and a second to approve the funding for the Adams County Economic Development Corporation, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Okay, thank you, Phyllis. Something else yet?
One more thing. The Decatur City Code of Ordinances are now on the Decatur website under the City Code tab on the top right of the homepage, so all the ordinances are updated up through December two thousand fifteen.
Thank you for that work.
Okay, department heads, how about, unless you've got anything tonight?
No.
Roger?
No, nothing further.
Jim?
Um, nothing.
Okay. Jeremy?
Uh, yeah, hang on. Yeah, no, not today.
Do we need to do it?
Like we talked earlier, the demo work on First Street is continuing, it should be completed this week. We are running the street sweeper this week and next week. It will cover the entire city over a two-week period. We get a lot of questions from residents of, when are you coming down my street? I never know, so I don't want to go by car. What I started doing this past Monday, I guess we set the schedule for the first two weeks of every month to cover the whole entire city for the first time. Obviously, there will be some additional sweeping throughout the month, but it has been ruled down to be the first two weeks of every month, from like March till October, is what we will be in every neighborhood. The summer help will be starting in another week or week and a half. Once making it started, we'll be doing quite a bit of herb ing, crosswalks, stop markers, and so on and so forth, staying light. Other than that, we're in pretty good shape.
Thanks, Chairman. Dan?
No, nothing.
Ann? Craig?
Uh, really, I was wondering, I had that conversation with you, and I don't know whether this is appropriate timing or not, but as far as budget-wise coming up with the bill PD, what plans are in the future, or do we know, or we continue on what we're doing, or will there be still a budget of bills and that type of thing?
I would say, Mary, how long have you been in there?
Been in there June about...
A year ago, June. So it's coming up on a year, so we probably should review it again?
It has an automatic renewal every three months, and if we want to no longer continue it, then either party has to give a thirty-day notice.
Okay. So if that's the case...
It's safe to say tonight, you can go ahead and keep the budget, please, for...
I would say yes.
Utilities are repaired.
I always think under the budget, the utilities are being now paid by...
North Adams, our council is paying the utilities.
Right now...
But you're saying if they would not, if we wouldn't continue the contract, you want to continue the budget then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ann? Mr. Carbach?
I'm trying to make it sharp and sweet. That'll be the day.
My job.
Well, I'll pretty clean up this starting again, and we're doing a few things different this year. What we're concentrating on again is excessive weeds and vegetation, but when we post a notice on somebody's door as far as if they have excessive weeds and vegetation, we are also giving them another notice, a violation, and giving them five days to abate the nuisance, in other words, mow their yard. If they don't, the city's gonna step forward and mow their yard for them at a cost of a hundred and sixty dollars an hour, and at that rate, if they don't pay that within thirty days, we will go in and go in front of the Adams County Recorder and issue a lien on that property. When it comes to accumulation of rubbish, which is another item that we'll be looking at, we're basically following that same pattern this year. We're giving them so many days, depending on how much rubbish they have in their yard. If they don't abate the nuisance, the city has the final determination to consider what is accumulation of rubbish and what is rubbish, and then we will charge them, if the city has to go in and clean it up, we will charge them at that same rate, a hundred and sixty dollars per hour, with the same consequences if they don't pay within the thirty days, we will put a lien on their property. The last and final thing is vehicles. And what we're doing this year, and we started a little bit last year, we will be issuing them a paper on their windshield of their vehicle if it's not in ordinance, which gives them basically ten days to correct that problem. If, within ten days, they have not corrected the problem, in other words, if they haven't made the car operable, or put a license plate on it, or whatever, then a tag will be placed on it, a seventy-two dollar tag, which, at that point, they have seventy-two hours to correct it, if not, we will tow the vehicle. We started this out, Officer Stoltz kind of came up with this idea last year, we started this out last year, and it's amazing how well that helps, that once they're given ten days to correct the problem, we towed a great few cars last year, which is kind of same thing with not mowing and not cleaning up rubbish. We want the people to go ahead and cooperate. I mean, that's the big thing. And then the other thing, which I gave the news media, we have a number to call for the code enforcement officer, which is actually the garage over Elm Street, and they also can go to the website and go to the Facebook page. In other words, we want them to do the same thing as Aaron had pointed out a couple weeks ago, to...
Report it online.
Report that way, that way it can get to the proper people at that time, so basically that's it.
Bill, if a car's towed, how's that handled as far as the payment and everything?
What I do is, if I don't tow any, I usually let the police officer do that, and then it's total, at the owner's expense, they'll get, charge a story fee, and they will be charged for the towing.
Okay.
So that's kind of why we encourage people to correct the problem, but there's a number of vehicles sitting around. Every year, I think, well, I've got them all cleaned up, and every year, they pop up again. So far, I started a couple weeks ago, and I think I already have tagged twenty people, twenty cars, so, you know, you don't realize there are that many cars sitting around that have flat tires, or no license plates, or just, you know...
Thanks for your work, Bill. Keep it up.
Thank you. I appreciate, I enjoy doing it, I really do. I just need a nicer vehicle to drive around.
Think a little altering vehicle would be nice?
Yeah. Something that goes faster, and...
Something to get away from.
Yeah, get away, faster, get away.
Something with a siren?
Something with a siren, yeah.
Light...
So these young kids don't pull up next to the shop...
Put a shoe down, they can get away.
Well, they don't pull up to the golf cart, golf cart, and rev their engines up and then take off, and then they'll have all against them. Don't tell a fire chief, I just told him. Oh. We were... I didn't think there was...
If we were now, you were gonna drive, you would have gotten hard doors.
Ballproof windows.
I'm working on the horsepower.
Melissa?
We want to say thank you to the Adams County Community Foundation. We were notified that the Decatur Fire Department received a three-thousand-dollar grant to purchase Kieran Care smoke detectors. Any department in the county will have access to those to distribute to those who are in need. So thank you to the foundation.
This is just a little gift from our regular smoke detector program. These are roughly three hundred and thirty dollars a piece. The state supplies some of them every month, although the state is slow, and we're still gonna try to use the state's first, and then these will be a backup. But therefore, I'll fly fire department, they all pitched and wrote a letter again.
Great. Thank you. Okay, anything from, comments from council tonight?
Two things. Last meeting, we discussed acquisition of Fro property.
Mm-hmm.
Is that moving anywhere?
It's kind of installed right now. Larry and Mr. Fro are still talking.
Okay.
Hopefully, it'll work out.
Second, NDOT has been in town hatching Two Twenty Four.
Monroe Street.
Monroe Street. Is that, do we just accept it? That's done? I've heard lots of concern.
They never really completed all of what they were after, and they just pulled out what's left elsewhere. Patching's not, it's not really a bad thing at this point.
Well, they made it worse.
Jeremy, is that patching, or they call that speed bump?
Jeremy should be, should be.
I'm not making that up.
Would you like me to call Bluffton, or would you like to call Bluffton, or...
I had some phone calls before, but the district up there...
So you're already looking into it?
They've already called me.
Okay.
A few times.
Okay.
There's some...
Seems to have made the road worse, let alone it looks terrible.
But, yeah, this was, you know, this was all part of their plan, it was a Band-Aid, they call us, called it, to get us by until eighteen when they're gonna...
But you reported that a gentleman got hit by one of the stones. He was out doing his business, and what, didn't you?
Yes.
And a stone flipped up and hit him because of this out here.
Okay, any other comments from council?
Well, I want to thank the city for taking the street sweeper by and cleaning up after they made the big mess. I appreciate that, it did make it a little bit better and more bearable.
That did help.
I got a question for Jeremy. We're talking about the road paving. Do you have a list that's ready? I mean, is it beneficial to start paving earlier than later, or...
I have a monthly list.
Does it need to be...
We made an estimate, estimate of that. Actually, I met with one of the payment companies again today to add to the list. I'm hopeful that in two weeks, I can bring you an actual plan of life list. I know we passed around a few...
We have, we have a plan.
That was just some real short, just a short list. With the direction that you guys have pointed tonight for additional money, I'd actually like to, Ethan Snyder and I are working on updating our asset management plan, which is a road grading, go around and grade every street in the city. It's called the Pazer Rating System. He's supposed to have it updated to where, as long as he can get it done within the next two weeks, I should be able to bring it up. We can just put it on the screen and just show you exactly your areas that you need to be concerned with immediately and over the course of a few years. Just real, real quick and real briefly here, through the assessment that we've done, we've got about ninety-six areas that need some attention, some immediate attention. Not all of them are complete curb-to-curb paving, some of it's some patching, some cracked ceilings, and so on and so forth. You have a hundred and fourteen areas or a hundred and fourteen streets that really don't need much of anything at all, that's gonna buy you another six to seven years before you really have to do a whole lot. So with that additional money that's come available, and with the approval of the roller that you guys approved tonight in the Board Works meeting, I think we're really gonna be able to make some great headway over the next few years and get a lot of the streets back to normal, back to where they should be. We've had a rough couple of years, you know, this past winter wasn't near as severe, but the two winters prior were very severe and very hard on our streets. We are doing a lot of utility work, a lot of utility replacements and upgrades in some of the streets, so, you know, we have to take that all into consideration while we're doing the rating system and actually getting the streets set up and paved. I should be far more prepared in two weeks, once we get everything up or downloaded onto the system and get everything set up. That way, we can come in and actually spend a few minutes and kind of go through some things. The papers are up and running, the plants are open, both companies have contacted, and they're ready to go. But whenever we're ready to make a decision, this amount of streets, you know, they'll be ready for service.
So when would we want to do the additional appropriation? That's exactly...
We still have to receive the money, and they have to, June first, the auditor's office to distribute that, so...
So if they're gonna, if, if, until June first, I would say that our first council meeting in June, we would want to take some action on that, is that correct?
If Jeremy wants to get started as soon as possible, yeah, because the, if in fact we have to go through the additional appropriation process...
You have to publish a notice, and then you have to...
Yeah, that's gonna take probably...
You'll have to approve it, and...
Yeah.
At the process.
You're probably looking a month, minimum.
And by the time we come to a agreed list, you know, I want you guys to then, okay, there's a lot of additional money. You know, if we can spend a little time at the next meeting, if a war area is not on that list, we'll get the estimate, we'll try to fit it into the list, you know, so you're probably gonna have over the next meeting or two, coming up with an agreeable project list for this year on paving, so we're really probably not too far behind. Once you get on their schedule, you may be two or three weeks out before they can get a bill set up, get a bill scheduled to get it in here, and then you're roughly another month or so before you, you know, you actually get a bill, probably...
Right.
Close to forty-five days before you would actually go through the...
You don't pay them upfront.
No.
He already has one to get started.
Okay, yeah, well, it's a good thing we talked about, yeah.
You know, so right now, you're the first of May, the additional appropriation, the large amount of work that's there due to the money that's coming, you know, we may be in the May first of June, you know, before you really get, starting to see some of the bills and stuff coming in.
Can we start the process before we get the money?
I don't think you can, because you have to have the money in the account.
Right.
Before you can...
Well, he's gonna give us, in two weeks, he's gonna give us an update. We've already budgeted these streets for this year.
That, he could go ahead and get started.
Yeah, he can get that going, but I'm saying if we get the estimates, I think it's a great idea, and then we figure out the budget...
Start the process, first meeting in June, and...
Listen to what he has to say on the grading of these streets, because I think that's a proper way to do it.
Yep.
And then think about this in the next couple of weeks, and drive our cities, and drive our streets, and make this, and make... drive our streets, make this, make...
Yep.
Any other comments? Jeremy?
One thing I'd like to, this just reminded me, so the city's 457 plan is currently nationwide. I think we need to seriously consider, not necessarily replacing, but introducing the state's plan, which is called Hoosier Start. They were here before to talk to us, I'll talk with a representative. The reason I'm saying this is because we, the city, have, because of fiduciary rules, we have a fiduciary, we are the fiduciary of this plan. And when you look at costs and investment, and previously, we've had other options, and we've elected to stay, not make any changes, but with new rules, new fiduciary laws, and the way that they're looking at these things, there are better options. And I guess why I like what the Hoosier Start Plan, is that the state takes on the fiduciary responsibility. And not just that, but it's actually a very good plan, having now looked at it. So I don't know if we want to try to set up a meeting with that representative again.
Is that the same one? Is he still working with that?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
See if we can get him on the agenda.
Yeah, or we want to meet a smaller one beforehand, and that, because there's gotta be a proposal. I mean, the county just switched, they had the same thing. County was using Nationwide, and they, essentially, it's open, you can push your money over if you want, you can keep Nationwide, but they're allowing, basically, all new participants go into the new plan, and eventually they'll migrate the old ones away. So I just...
Good point.
Given all the changes, fiduciary laws, we need to look at this.
Okay. Keep that on the agenda.
Every council member's had something, but you wily guy. Now it's time to go. All right, Tim, how about you?
Nope.
Come on.
Nope. I'm out of here.
Phyllis, you have anything else? How about comments from the public tonight? Anything?
The North Adams Arts Council would like to invite the city council to attend the Matt Dyer Tea Party on May 15th, from 2:00 to 4:00, at the Riverside Center. You come and design a hat to wear at, you know, sculpture tour unveiling on June 15th. Everything is provided, there'll be wares and hats that you can decorate, I think maybe a hat decorated by Ken Meyer or Matt Dyer, who's known for his hat indicators, would be something nice.
Now, is this part of the thing, do they get sold?
They do. So you can make a hat to take, and then you want to donate, if you'd like to have sold at the sculpture tour.
And then, yeah, because then, they've made some good money, didn't they? Did you get a report on that today?
Tickets are available online, $10 for adults, and $5 for children between and under, on our website. And we also have them available at the Riverside Center, and I have my personal event.
What's the date of that?
It is May 15th.
Sunday.
Yes.
Okay. Any other public comments?
You're talking about vehicles, are, are the vehicles parked in the lot on H Street in compliance with all city codes?
What vehicles are you talking about?
The ones behind the fire station, the junkyard.
Oh, he's talking...
They've removed some over the years.
As a, as a...
That's a car.
He's listed as a used car lot.
Yeah.
So yeah, he is.
He doesn't sell very many cars, does he?
No, not out of there. But he, he has an office in that, Roger and I checked on it, so he has an office there, so I don't know what to do about that, I really don't.
De-pass the ordinance.
De-pass?
I told him...
Change the ordinance?
I told him last year, my, my goal for him is that every vehicle that's set on any biz lots to be operable, so. We have the same thing on Elm Street, also quite, not as severe, and they cleaned that up quite a bit. He's actually cleaned that up, believe it or not, from what we started it. There was actually a Volkswagen there, and...
Had a pre-dawn, right?
Your story, when we first stopped down.
With my bike by the way.
What's the rules? Because they gotta be able to move in thirty days, or...
What's the rules on that, Bill? Doesn't a car have to be operable?
Well, not necessarily in a used car lot.
Well, why not?
I have no idea.
I mean, if it's there in business to sell cars, shouldn't they be able to move?
That's his business.
I know, but what's the point of the ordinance if we don't correct that? I mean, if you go to a used car lot, I mean, do we have to?
What if you have your car parked in your driveway and doesn't ever move?
You can still get an ordinance.
In your driveway?
Yeah. It's in the ordinance. The kind that's...
It should be operable.
You still have to explain it, and it sure is...
Yeah, but if it doesn't move, I'm saying, it just...
If it's movable, it's okay.
Yeah.
If it doesn't operate.
Okay.
Well, Clyde's concern is, is a car that's sat there for ten years, twenty years, that's never moved. Is it really for sale? Is it really a car lot? Or is it a junkyard?
Well, I think, I think that's probably a catch 22 also, in respect, you have to define what used car is, for a dealer, and, yeah, they could keep it as long as they wanted to, that's something that you would have to decide under.
I guess my point is, is what do we look at?
I mean, we can, we can check into and see if there's...
Tim, sorry to go.
No, we can, we can check into and see if, maybe take a look at some of the other ordinances around and see how they handle it, or whether or not there's some kind of...
Clyde?
Yeah. Well, we can take a look at whether there's modifications to the ordinance. I think the issue is, if it's properly permitted as a business, you know, it's gonna be hard to argue whether it's operable or not. Now, if it doesn't have wheels on it, or if it's not plated, you know, but if it's set there forever, who's to say that it doesn't start up and run? Yeah, it then becomes a fleecing issue, as much as anything.
Yeah, we can look, we can look at what other communities do, and see if there's revisions we can make. That's a good, it's a very good, very good question.
Every day I look at them, and a lot of those vehicles haven't moved since last fall, you know?
Or longer.
Or longer. Every now and then, you'll see move one around, and pull the dumpster in there, one at a time, start throwing them in with that.
Any other comments? I would be looking for an approval of the claims, then.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. A motion to adjourn and a second, all in favor? Opposed the same? We adjourn.